Welcome, everyone. I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance and the pledge will be led by Alderman-at-Large George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to meet here tonight. We pray your blessings upon our city, Lord. We pray for wisdom in all of our decisions, Lord. And, Lord, we want to continue to pray for the people of Ukraine, Lord Jesus, that you would bring an end to the war, Lord, and that things that go on there may glorify you. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the April 19, 2022 meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots. Second, Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next on our agenda is a presentation of honor cords for our graduating class for our Mayor's Youth Council. It's already May. Wow, for all the seniors, can you believe May is here? You know, you started so many years ago in school and then you started your senior year in August and then you turn around in just a minute and it's May already. So, congratulations to all of our graduates and for all of our students and our seniors that, you know, that have served on our Mayor's Youth Council. I want to thank you for your service. Thank you for representing us well around the state. Y'all have done a great job, you know, representing South Haven and I appreciate that on behalf of the citizens of our city. And I'm going to give you, before we do the cords, I'm going to give you just a little bit of unsolicited advice. And this is not, this is not mayoral advice, has nothing to do with the fact that I'm the mayor of South Haven. This is just coming from a middle-aged man who's been where you are at one time. And I've made lots of mistakes in my life and I've had lots of successes in my life, too. And so, just as, again, unsolicited free advice for you, in the next five years and then after that, the next five will be very critical years of your life. You're going to have lots of people that try to influence your decisions. They may be a boyfriend or a girlfriend. It may be a fiance. It may even be a parent that are going to try to tell you what you should do with your life. They're going to try to tell you that, hey, that sounds like a great plan, but that's too hard for you. You know, why don't you settle for this? You know, if you do that, it's going to take more years in school or it's going to, you know, you're going to have to go through, make this sacrifice or that sacrifice. So, just remember this. You're the general manager of your life. You're the only person that one day is going to look yourself in the mirror and be happy with the choices that you made. So, my advice to you is don't let anyone put a label on you. You can be whatever you're willing to work for. If you want it bad enough, you can have it. No labels and remember, it's up to you. You know, do what it is you want to do because one day, again, you're going to look in the mirror and you're going to remember these years and you're going to say, wow, did I do what I wanted to do? Did I make the most of my life? And so, just remember that advice. So, if everyone, I'm going to name the ones that are our graduates this year and if you will join me, I'll tell you what, why don't we go ahead, Christie, we're going to have everybody join us at the front and then individually we'll present the court. So, if all the seniors will join me at the front, please. Okay, where do you want me to stand? So, we'll start, we're going to start with South Haven High School first. Matthew Gardner. Mackenzie McBride. Anna Robertson. And then DeSoto Central High School. And again, thanks to our South Haven sponsors, Tim Gardner. Tim, we appreciate all that you do. Our DeSoto Central sponsor is Jeff, Shane's Jeff. We appreciate you. And for DeSoto Central, we have Holmland Syk. Not with it. Erin Dale. Anaya Johnson. And Xenia Owens. Xenia, I'm sorry. If I could see what's in front of me, I'd say that. Okay, and then North Point Christian. Our sponsor's Lori Walton. We appreciate Lori's help. First, we have Joshua Flores. And Elijah Tucker. Congrats to all of you. Good luck with everything. Let's give them a round of applause. Good luck to all of you. Okay, next on our agenda is a resolution for an ordinance for the city of South Haven to allow the operation of golf carts on specific streets.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, Alderman Hoots.
I'll second.
And a second, Alderman Jerome. And as we, I'll open discussion. Last meeting, we went over the highlights again. So, just open the floor up for discussion about the proposed ordinance.
So, these are specified, the areas are where the speed limit is 25 miles per hour or less, which basically limits it to neighborhood subdivisions.
Correct. I mean, the goal was for safety. You want to have it in areas where the speed limit, you know, is low. So, it'd be, you know, that's going to be restricted to, you know, neighborhood streets, parks, that kind of thing. But obviously, your arterial roads and your big collector's streets are all going to have a speed limit higher than 25 miles per hour. So, we think it's, again, it's a way to, you know, to allow another quality of life thing for the people that like it. How many people are going to rush out and buy a golf cart? I don't think you're going to see much different, but the ones that do enjoy that, it's a safe way, you know, we believe for them to, you know, to enjoy that feature. There could be some value in the future in some of the parks, you know, by allowing transportation. If you're doing that, you know, you could keep pedestrians and maybe some, instead of walking, some people that, you know, maybe have health issues or things like that could use a golf cart instead of, you know, walking in certain areas and not having to have a vehicle, go, you know, get back in their vehicle to go. So, anyway, there's some value to it, but yeah, the map in red, that just shows the entire city. It includes any street in the city that has a speed limit of 25 miles per hour or less and it also allows controlled intersection with a pedestrian crosswalk. That way, you're not allowed to get on that road, but you're allowed to cross that road to another, you know, 25 mile per hour or less street. As y'all know, we beat this one in the ground. We worked on this one starting last fall. We talked about it and really, I think we did a good job of just simplifying it, you know, just making it simple and I believe it's a safe, it's a safe way to do it. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Yow.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Ed.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next on the agenda is item seven. We're going to table that, correct, Nick? We need to table that. And then next on the agenda is item eight. It's a resolution for South Haven Police Department surplus.
This is just a surplus for two handguns that are below $1,000 so that, assuming board approval or unanimous board approval, they can be surplus via private sale under Mississippi Code 172525.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne. Second, Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda are the two ARPA projects that I mentioned to you previously. One of those is the Autumn Woods Drainage Project and the Carriage Hills Estates Drainage Project. Autumn Woods is the replacement of a massive culvert that goes through that subdivision that has perforations in it and has caused sinkholes for a few years. Carriage Hills is a project, when the subdivision was built in the late 80s, there were some problems with the size of the culverts that were put in. None of us were around then to know that it was done right, but obviously, it was not. And so, we feel like it will provide, we feel like the city should have probably had oversight of the culvert back then. And for that reason, it does qualify for our drainage improvement policy. And so, since we do have the ARPA funding that can be used for these purposes, we're now, Mr. Dan Cordell of Civil Inc., we're ready to get rolling with that.
Not much I can add to that. Basically, tonight, we're asking for approval for two more conversations. One to get started on the Autumn Woods rehabilitation and the other is for the Carriage Hills that I know we've talked several times about for the drainage improvements there. It's for the engineering and the construction oversight.
Mr. Mayor, make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Kelly. Second, Alderman Payne. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is medical cannabis zoning discussion. Mr. Nick Manley, start us off? We haven't talked about this very much.
Tonight, the only thing we're doing tonight is two items. It's all part of the discussion, but it's two separate items. It's, they're not taking any official action tonight other than to authorize the advertisements of the hearing. So, what we're doing is having the medical, I mean, the city's comprehensive plan amended to be, to reflect the new, to reflect medical cannabis within the medical commercial, or commercial medical area or district or zone, or medical commercial zone. And so, in order to do that, we need to amend our comp plan. So, the first thing we will do is authorize the hearing and advertiser to amend the comp plan for the June 7th meeting, or is the first meeting in June. And then it's also, as part of that, we are going to, we have to create the medical commercial zone, which has not been created yet as part of the discussions at the last board meeting and based on the motions that were made. So, tonight, what we're doing is authorizing the advertisement for the hearing set forth, I mean, set forth in the et cetera times. And then that will then allow us to have the hearing on Tuesday, June 7th, to amend our comp plan so it's consistent with creating the medical commercial zone. And at that point, then we'll discuss boundaries within the zone. But tonight, all that's being done is authorizing the hearing to, authorizing the publication of the notice along with the proposed hearing dates. And then on those dates, you would then amend the comp plan and also amend, I mean, and then create the medical commercial zone as set forth in our use chart and in the city ordinances. And then after that's done, you would then set the boundaries for the medical commercial zone as we've discussed in the past. So, just to be clear, there's no boundaries being set tonight. It's just nothing more than getting the zoning in place that's required in order to achieve that objective in the future, so.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores. Second, Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman McGee.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Yow.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, move. We adopt a resolution granting authority to clean private property as presented on the state.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne. Second, Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of the properties on the list that would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney Cook, planning director.
Yes, sir. We have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one will be a design review approval for a climate-controlled storage facility. It's going to be just north of the Waffle House at 55 and Church Road. You'll see it highlighted there. We had previously, well, actually, at a meeting, just a couple meetings back, we actually subdivided it, got that approved, went through the site plan process. And the package you have in front of you has got the architectural elevations for it. Very similar looking in nature to like the Great American Home Store or something to that. It's attractive. We had them provide a focal point. The tower area is actually facing the northeast, so it's facing oncoming traffic coming down I-55. So, that is their focal point. We did ask them to enhance the green space areas and on the back side so it doesn't look like the back of a property. When you're on 55, it'll have that faux front. They did agree to that and add the decorative lighting and one of those were all agreed upon, planning commission did unanimously in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number one on the planning agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Gallagher. Second, Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion?
It's a good-looking building.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second application is for the final phase of the Cobblestone Office Park. It's going to be Section E, south of Goodman Road, just east of Snowden Lane. Pretty much built out now. There's two lots still available where you see highlighted in red. They're proposing to subdivide those into lots 17 and 18, I'm sorry, 16 and 17, both a little over half an acre apiece and both set to have a multi-story office building, very similar to what you already have there. It is compliant with all the commercial subdivision regulations set forth in the ordinance and was voted unanimously to approve as submitted.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve item number two on the planning agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Wheeler. Second, Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
Alderman Yow.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report. Want to update everyone on a few things. First thing is, we just got a huge announcement recently. The board, y'all will remember that there was a presentation made to you a couple of years ago about a new workforce training center to be placed at Northwest Community College on Church Road. The college, for a few years now, has been trying to secure funding to build this training center. This thing would be huge, you know, it ties in with so many of the other opportunities that Northwest offers. But it's a large training center that would create so many opportunities for our young people. And obviously, you know, one of the biggest factors of bringing economic development to an area is having a qualified workforce. That's one of the key things. So, we've got a lot of momentum in DeSoto County and specifically in South Haven right now. But the good news is that Northwest received a federal grant from the Department of Commerce from ARPA money of $7 million. So, now they have the money. They had been trying to go to the state to get money unsuccessfully, but now they have secured this federal money. So, this workforce training center is coming to South Haven. So, that's going to be huge for our city. So, that's great news that we just found out about this week. Dr. Michael Hindle, you know, is the president of Northwest and give him a pat on the back the next time you see him. He worked extremely hard. I've heard him talk over and over every time he got the opportunity to speak about this center. And I know he's done a lot of the legwork to try to secure funding, so he deserves, you know, a pat on the back and great commendations for a great effort on his part. So, that's great news for our city and for Northwest. As y'all know, or for those that may not know, you know, Northwest Community College is at the DeSoto Center and, you know, it also has University of Mississippi classes there. So, it's a great opportunity in our city for people to, you know, take classes at the University of Mississippi and Northwest. They have programs where they work well together, so it's great for our kids, you know, to be able to stay home, to go to school or, you know, people that go back to school. It's great for our city, a great thing to serve our people. A few other updates. Spring Fest was a tremendous success. I want to thank Christie Faulner. Christie Faulner is our director of Spring Fest. You know, we had some, usually we have a little bit of shaky weather. We had a little bit of shaky weather this time, too, but Friday and Saturday, the weather was gorgeous and it was just a phenomenal thing. You could tell that the people in our city were ready to get back out again, you know, after going through the COVID years. It was just packed. The carnival was packed. The barbecue event was full. And you could just see that people were ready to get back out. It seemed like Spring Fest of many, many years ago. It was really a good event. And so, anyway, total success. Thank you, Christie, for all your efforts. Christie puts in an enormous amount of hours out there. Words don't describe the work that's involved on her end. So, I thank you, Christie, for all that. Street paving update. We're making good progress now. The weather has been, I mean, obviously, working around the rain, but the temps are good now for street resurfacing. So, our list, we've made a lot of progress on that. You may have seen streets in your wards being paved, but Lehman Roberts is going through the list pretty quickly, so we're making some significant progress. One thing that's notable, y'all know that on our list this year, we're going to pave the streets around the Lander Center. The county and the Convention and Visitors Bureau agreed to, you know, split that into thirds with us and help us. That's a big, very expensive project, so we're getting ready to do that. We had to do some drainage improvements out there first and then now we're getting into graduation season. So, we're going to have to work around the graduation some, but we're going to be paving those streets or prepping those for paving, but working around the graduation schedule. So, it's not going to be complete by the time graduation gets here. I would love if we had fresh streets for that. Unfortunately, it's not going to happen, but that's underway in this summer, by the, within the next 45 days, it will be done out there. Thursday is, we're going to make a proclamation to declare this Thursday as the National Day of Prayer. And so, I'd like to read the proclamation at this time. Whereas our nation was founded on a firm and faithful bedrock by men who turned to God for guidance through prayer and prayerful reverence, has since sustained our society and guided our government. And whereas in 1775, the Continental Congress designated a National Day of Prayer, an action reaffirmed in 1952, and the United States Congress designated the first Thursday in May as an annual National Day of Prayer. And whereas prayer allows us an opportunity to reflect and to seek guidance, strength, comfort, and inspiration from Almighty God. And whereas in these trying times, when the world is so unsettled and when so many brave citizens of Mississippi and the United States are far from home, making great sacrifices for those abroad and those here at home, prayer becomes all the more meaningful and important. And whereas this year's theme is exalt the Lord who has established us based on biblical scripture, Colossians 2 verses 6 and 7. And whereas this year marks the 71st observance of National Day of Prayer and people will gather together across our nation to observe this important event. Now therefore, I Darren Mussowhite, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of South Haven, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 5th, 2022, as the National Day of Prayer in South Haven and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing this important occasion with appropriate prayers for our city, our state, and our nation. Okay, and that's all that I have for our mayor's report. Are there any questions for me from the board? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, move. We approve the personnel docket as presented on the state.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne. Second, Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Mr. Nick Manley, again. Mr. Nick Manley, again.
Just one item. It was a contract with the city, between the city and Nichols Fire and Security. It's $575 per quarter and it's just for monitoring expenses associated, or alarm monitoring and monitoring expenses associated with the Snowden pedestrian bridge. So tonight, need authorization for Bradley Wallace to sign that contract.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Flores. Second, Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman McBride.
Yes.
Alderman Keller.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Okay. Next on our agenda is our utility bill adjustment docket.
Mayor, move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented on the state?
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne. Second, Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Alderman Flores.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the claims docket in the amount of $1,559,239.68, including demand checks.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne. Second, Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Hoots.
Yes.
Alderman Jerome.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
Make that motion?
Second.
We got a motion by Alderman Gallagher. Second, Alderman Hoots. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it. Motion carries. The need this evening, claims and litigation involving the South Haven Police Department and regarding city infrastructure, personnel in parks and our police department, and economic development within our city. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Gallagher. Second, Alderman Jerome. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it. Motion carries. The mayor and board will now in our executive session.